Hey, good evening. I'd like to call the Columbia County Board of Commissioners June 7th meeting to order. Please bow your heads with invocation. Father, we just thank you for the ability to live in Columbia County. We thank you for the blessings that you bestow on this county and sheriff's office and the first responders who protect us and take care of us. But I pray that you'd be with us now as we go through this meeting, help us make the right decisions and help us to have wisdom and understand. Cast all these things in Christ's name. Amen. Please stand for the pledge. The record show we have a full quorum of commissioners. Misses, you have the minutes from the May 17th meeting in your packet. With your approval, I'll accept a motion to do so.
Motion to accept is presented.
Second. Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. So the agenda, is it fairly set?
I believe so. It's ready for your approval, Mr. Chairman.
So we do have two or three folks who've asked to speak, and I'm gonna let you come up and speak when we actually get to your item. Commissioners, you have the consent agenda in front of you. Each one of these items has been given to the committees and received necessary votes to be placed on the consent agenda. So if it meets with your approval, I'll accept one motion to approve them all.
I'd like to make a motion to accept as presented.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Want to new business, Ms. Angela Edmund? Please come on down. If you would just state your name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Angela Edmund. I'm 516 of Town, Georgia. I am here on behalf of my adult daycare that I would like to start. I have been in the nursery for over 25 years. I see a need for an adult daycare. A lot of people are going back to work from the pandemic and they're to put their elderly loved ones, whether it be parents or their children. My plan is to have an adult daycare that will house about seven people. I've already spoke with a contractor, have safety measures in effect. As far as like a safety door, we're gonna have alarm system. Nobody's gonna be in the front of the house. And that we will have people in front of the house. This will pick up or drop off. It's gonna be on Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., closed on holidays and weekends. They'll adjust the times as needed for those individuals. We're gonna have at least two people on staff at all times. So the ratio, like a two to one or three to one as far as staff to clients. I was disapproved at the last one. I wasn't really given a reason as to why I was disapproved. So I don't know what it is that I need to try to adjust, address so that I can be approved to have a rezone.
Matt's not here. Who can speak?
I can. Ms. Goddard. I can address. Do you have a specific question?
Yeah, just what were the concerns?
So the code allows for an adult daycare to operate up to six people in a residential setting if the business owner lives on the property. In this case, the business owner's not going to live on the property, so that's what triggered the rezoning. Really, there's on this, there we go. This property is along what is in the master plan as a professional corridor. So it's being zoned to P1. That was a choice because it's the least intrusive of any of the other possibilities. However, if the rezoning is approved, then there's a litany of things that are gonna have to be dealt with, such as the parking, the landscaping. The parking's gonna have to be in such a way that you can turn around and not back out because of its commercial property at that point. It'll also have to have backflow preventers, grease traps. All that'll be addressed during the site plan review process. So those are really, the biggest issues would come after the rezoning. I think, I don't recall disapproval last time, so I really can't address that. I don't know if Mr. Sterling.
Yeah, the planning commission didn't give a specific reason as to why. I know they had concerns about previous adult daycares here in the county and some of the activities that have occurred with those. I don't know if that had any influence on it, but clearly there was concern from them that there isn't commercial zoned property along this corridor yet. This would be, you know, the first in this area of Riverwatch Parkway. But I think they were certainly nervous about making an adult daycare the first commercial activity on the corridor.
In addition, this is currently in that entire area surrounding this particular piece. Everything is zoned R3 right now. So this would be the first P1 parcel. It is an adult daycare. Riverwatch Parkway is a busy road. Sure, there would be some allocations made or measures put in place to watch over those people at the daycare. You would have to address that.
Yes, sir. I tried to do some research and I did not see any incidents that had occurred during, at adult daycare. I did see some incidents that had occurred at a personal care home. This is not a personal care home. I don't understand why it is that I would have to live there if it's a business. I don't know of any owners that live at their daycare.
Let me clarify that. My point was you're going through the rezoning because you're not living there. If you were living there, you wouldn't have to go through the rezoning. I was just pointing that out.
Questions?
Mr. Sterling, what other uses could this property see, say this were to cease to be an adult daycare?
Well, depending on how the commission decides to take action on this agenda item, if you were to approve it, you could approve it for the specific use. This only if you were so inclined, if you wanted to condition it that way. But professional P1-type activities are gonna be professional offices, like an insurance agent could be one.
Lawyer's office.
Lawyer's office, things of, you know, similar nature of that type. So again, it would be your small professional offices that are typically going to be low-traffic generators, things of that nature.
Not any there yet. There's homes?
There isn't. Not in this stretch of Riverwatch. There are some at the ends, but not in the middle.
Be the first in that area.
Yeah, and you can see there from the zoning map.
Any other questions for Ms. Edmund? Thank you, ma'am.
I would add, Mr. Chairman, that that professional zone pertains really to Riverwatch Parkway, not really intended for the homes behind it.
Right, interior lots.
Exterior, right, that's correct.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, the file RZ 220504, I make a motion to disapprove the request for rezoning from R3 to P1 for the property located at tax map 077F, parcel 034, 0.93 plus or minus acres.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries? I want to have two folks that wanna speak. Dustin Young?
Good evening. My name's Dustin Young. I'm a resident at 5314 Magnolia Lane in Evans. I just wanna make four comments about the proposed change of conditions request on behalf of Pinnacle Bank. I am the market manager for the Augusta Market for Pinnacle Bank. I was involved in purchasing this property and have been in many discussions with the developer of Popeyes, which is the neighboring lot for which, when the property was rezoned residential to its current zoning, there was a condition made that a shared sign must be used. You can see from the pictures on the screen, this is from a week and a half ago after the construction of the shared sign. The top left picture is traveling northbound at the intersection of Autumn Trail, and you can only see the tip of the sign. You actually cannot see the sign itself because there's a retaining wall when the road grade was built up. When you actually enter the intersection of Autumn Trail, which is the bottom right picture, you can only see the top half of the sign. It was my understanding that this sign was gonna be built up to road grade and so that the entire sign would be visible from the road grade as it has been constructed. That is not so. So if we were to place our banks placard on the bottom half of the sign, it would actually not be visible to the general public using these roadways. The sign is located at the intersection of Autumn Trail. We have a shared access point along Lewiston Road, which is the furthest north point of the two lots, which is approximately 300 feet away from the sign location. I believe the code for a sign the size of ours, as we proposed, is a minimum of 50 feet, so we're about six times the distance that's required. In addition to that, to the north of our property is the Georgia Department of Transportation Attention Pond. We estimate that if there's future development beyond that Georgia DOT lot, that you're looking at at least 200 feet for any future signs to be erected for future development. And then lastly, I'll just state that we feel strongly that the architecture of our sign, as you see on the screen that was just up, closely aligns with the architecture of our building. We think that is much more visually appealing to the general public versus a sign that conforms to the Kroger master plan. And our sign is also very similar in design to the signs that have been constructed by Autozone and Longhorn, which are on the same side of our street than the same side of Lewiston Road, and those were both constructed within the last year.
Questions?
Thank you.
Also, is Moeen Azar here? I'd like to state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hey, good afternoon. Moeen Azar. I reside at 5123 Pickering Point in Evans, Georgia. And as the previous speaker, I'd like to speak out in favor of the rezoning request. I drive down Lewiston Road every day, and where the current sign is and the way it's situated, as the previous speaker said, the Pinnacle Bank sign would not be visible at all. And currently, even the Popeyes sign is not visible as to how it's located. And additionally, you know, I would recommend that the signs be actually raised to street level, grade level with Lewiston Road so that they are actually visible in a similar manner as the signs for Dairy Queen and Panera Bread and the other shops on the other side of Lewiston Road, and similar to how Longhorn's and Autozone are on the same side as Lewiston Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me start this off with a question. Mr. Sterling, I thought that this sign was supposed to be at road grade.
It could be. It very well could be higher in elevation. I'm not entirely sure why it's below, in essence, below.
Right.
Grade. So there may be some infield discrepancy that they may have started their putting at the wrong.
Parted that way. Okay, so it.
It could be a little bit.
Really, the Popeyes sign could be at road, it could be elevated to road grade.
That's correct.
Okay, so that's, go back the trees. Stay right there. So really, that Popeyes sign is at a disadvantage because of the road grade. And it would be, would virtually be impossible right now to see this if that's where Pinnacle Bank put their sign. I believe it's, the plan is to put it in this area. The only, so that's, so you're really approving the change, and he's right. It's well outside of the minimum distance, so there's not a problem there. The only other change to the conditions here was the style of the design. If you could go to the Pinnacle Bank sign, please. The way the conditions read right now is that it was supposed to have a pinnacle, for Pinnacle Bank, I guess. But they'd rather have a flat sign, flat monument sign, because it would match the style of the building. So really, those are the two things that you would be deciding on.
Questions? Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, for file RZ 220506, I make a motion to approve the request for a change of conditions for tax map 068, parcel 036, allow a freestanding sign on the parcel with an associated change in the sign design, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 19, 2022 planning commission report.
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Aries? I believe this second. Oh, never mind, it's not to the.
You wanna note that abstention for the record?
I abstained, Mr. Chairman.
No.
I have personal connections.
This is for the.
For the, correct. Thank you.
Next item is I3, I'm sorry, I1A3. Mr. Kennedy, you wanna give us a.
Sure. Yes, sir. This is for Horizon Towing. Where Horizon, Horizon Towing is being put in place to tow Horizon's own motor coaches back to this location. So they'll have a towing service. They will also tow other motor coaches, but those will go back to places other than Horizon, wherever they wanna be taken to. There's really not anything significant.
Questions? Is motion a second on the floor? All in favor, raise your right hand. Or do we, did you read?
What the motion? Chair, file RZ 220507, I make a motion to approve the request for a major revision to the existing S1 zoning for property located at tax map 031A, parcel 002, to add Horizon Towing as allowed use on the property, subject to the conditions enumerated in the May 19, 2022 planning commission report.
Second.
Now there's a motion, a second. Any other questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Next is a daycare. Mr. Kennedy?
Yes, sir. This is a conditional use, a request for a conditional use for a daycare. This property is located along Flowing Wells and Brockwood Street. There's a lot to this one. The, in order to make this happen, there are a number of things that would have to happen on this site. Could stop right there.
Have we seen this site before?
You have seen this site before. Did you wanna talk about that, Mr. Sterling?
Just that the application came through about seven, eight months ago, and the board turned that down at that time. So they had to wait for the six months to clear before they can reapply.
Fair enough.
But yeah, it's back again.
And because it's been, because it's been over 12 months now, they'll have to, it'll require them to make all the site improvements. So to make this, and it's this building, that Survival Daycare, they're gonna have to have the playground. I believe that is, in order to have playground, it's 35 square feet per child, and right now we're looking at 30 children. So there has to be a playground area. They'll have to improve the parking lot. They're gonna, I think it's gonna require approximately 10 places. These will not be able to be used for parking because you're not gonna be able to back out of the commercial business, so those will have to go away. There's quite a few things that will have to happen inside the structure itself. One point of interest is the, in the original submission, this was designated as a primary entrance. Traffic engineering has looked at it, and the reason that was submitted as a primary entrance is because at one point on Brockwood Street, this was a closed road during certain periods of time, and that had to do with the parking, people parking there across from the school. That is no longer, it no longer has those restrictions. So traffic engineering's proposal is to make Brockwood Street the primary entrance and to make the necessary changes to the entrance here to make it 20 feet apart and make it a commercial grade entrance.
Sterling, what do you have to add?
I think that covers most of it. You know, the issue with the sign out on the street originally dealt with previous construction, or constructed Martinez Elementary, and now with the newly reconstructed entrance further south. And away from that, the evaluation was that that sign was no longer necessary to prohibit and limit on-street parking for that area. So it was removed. That is a new element to this application as opposed to the one you saw a number of months ago.
Right, so they don't have to, were they asking for access to Flowing Wells Road, or?
No, they were utilizing the existing, they were intending to use the existing one at the north end of the property as access into the site. But as Kennedy indicated, traffic engineering reviewed that and ultimately decided that was not an appropriate option at this time. They would have to enter in off Brockwood Street and likely exit as well. They may be able to get away with exit only if they're gonna make a right turn out onto Flowing Wells.
Flowing Wells.
Or preschoolers only, or would there be after-school care kids?
Seven PM. There would be some, you know, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00, or 7:00 to 6:00, something like that. So there would be opportunity for after, but she primarily was indicating that it was going to be younger-than-school-aged kids. She preferred to deal with the 30 that she was gonna be limiting herself to, that she would be primarily non-school-aged kids, young. But there may be some of that after-school care. I guess let me also add that if there is a consideration by the board to approve, there are consideration of conditions available. If you were.
I don't have a form.
But both of these properties are under the zoning, is that correct? Is affecting both or one, or what is the intended use of the other property?
So it is one parcel, but it does have two structures on it. She is intending to occupy the southernmost at 208 Flowing Wells, not be occupying the 206 address at this time. If she were to want to expand into that structure, she would have to come back and get, you know, additional approval for that. So she, there were previous two, in these two locations, there were previously personal care homes, and those have since been discontinued. And that's, to Mr. Kennedy's point, almost a little over a year ago.
Under the plan development, the 206 address still.
Still is vacant.
A personal care home, or?
It's vacant.
Other thing, I mean.
But it could go in as such.
What would be the intended use?
They would have to, they would have to come back with something that was either personal care home, professional medical offices, clubs and lodges, schools of arts, personal services such as salons or indoor animal care. So those are what are already in that PDD.
But he moves into that other building, that's gonna throw your whole parking count out of whack.
They would then have to make the improvements to increase the parking to accommodate that additional use as well.
And it would trigger, they would have to come back anyway because there'd be a change.
Unless it's one of those specific uses that I just mentioned there. If it's something other than that, they would have to come back for that particular use.
Ms. Ray, are you here? Do you wanna speak?
Good afternoon. Okay, my name is Michonne DeRay. I live at 881 Roelo Domino Circle, Evans, Georgia, 30809, if I can remember. Okay, I started with the disapproval for zoning in 2021 of June. Although I was disappointed, I had the reason why the board denied the zoning change. The reasons were Brockwood had a road closure sign that was prohibited, the use of access to daycare during specific times of the day, the parking spaces, and Flowing Wells road congestion. I started with the road closure first. I called the Board of Education. I called Martinez Elementary. I called Columbia County Sheriff's Department, and also I called road planning. I talked to Keith on roads and planning. He told me that that was one of the signs that they had missed probably in the county. The county, the sign had no jurisdiction. Nobody, nobody knew who put the sign there, but yet nobody knew who could remove it either. So that was.
Government efficiency.
Yes. So me being who I am, I just called everybody. So needless to say, the sign got removed by the county. That's a plus. Flowing Wells road congestion, the project is due to be finished in 2022. When I first started out, I asked for 50 kids. The concern was the overflow of my parents coming in and out Flowing Wells Road, with that being one way in, one way out, because Brockwood, remember, was closed. Now that Brockwood is closed, I lowered my number, and we have access to Brockwood and Flowing Wells. So we have two points of entrance and exits. I have agreed to do the upgrades in the back with the parking spaces. I realized that if I wanted to expand my business in the other building, that I would have to come back to zoning and also do the parking spaces. I identified the parking spaces not on the side of the building. I don't know if that's north, south, east, or west, but it's the rear of the building. So that way, when my parents back out, they're not backing into main floor traffic. They're not backing out into oncoming traffic. They're backing out in the rear of the building. My daycare is a preschool, and it's like a monastery. So it gives the kids that didn't meet that September cutoff of age, turning five, that they will have an early education. Early education is very important in Georgia. So therefore, I have hired licensed teachers that can teach that curriculum. I have been doing this since 2014. I have, I take pride in what I do, and I would love to expand my business in this community, which I have stayed in since. I understand the concerns, and I can answer any questions to my best ability that you guys may have.
Are there two buildings on the property?
It is. It is. One is myself and the other one is vacant.
Could we? Beg your pardon?
I don't want to mess it up.
Oh, you won't mess it up?
I wouldn't count it. So, um, this is the play area, right here. So that is in the rear of the building. Um, originally Columbia County did the cu- the zoning where each child has to have 100 square foot of play area. This was 4,000 something square feet right in here. It's this property and underneath this tree. That's the blind spot, it's underneath the tree. My parking, um, Mr., Sterling? Said 10 parking spaces. On my report that Danielle gave me, it said seven. So, seven. So that being said, there are already five parks, one, two, three, four. But I was gonna add parking spaces here, sort of like the grocery store kind of thing, where they're, know what I'm saying, like?
Mm-hmm.
I don't have the words, I'm not, that's not my expertise. But that was my plan. Also, we understand that this will have to be at the code because there's no business that had been there in the last 12 months. So this will have to add the flowers that you guys like. And then this is also another interest as well that they approved. So instead of parking out, backing up until this road right here, this, this could be staff only and then the parents can park in this area once we get it completed. The estimate price for the guy to come do the cement and the parking spaces was $1,500 starting out.
And there's enough room? I guess I don't, I acknowledge, I don't know.
Yes, sir, it is.
Child care business, enough room in the building for children?
Yes, sir, the building is 4,900 square feet. And I'm asking, I started out with 50, then I went to 33, now I'm just trying to get 25 if, if that. And the reason the number, the magic number is 21 because the state offers incentives for my teachers if we have 21 children.
How many teachers would you have in an organization like that? Or just?
I would have three.
Three?
Mm-hmm, and they're licensed certificate, they're licensed holding teachers. And that's why it's so important for me to get the grants, because you know, everybody, because you guys are businessmen, you know that everybody's asking for not 725 anymore. They're asking for the big bucks. And by me being a small business, um, I wanted to make myself more competitive for the right teachers. My current teacher is from Kentucky, so she came to Kentucky to join our workforce. So that's a plus for us. Thank you.
Was that other person working in the other?
She's working in our main facility. And her job would be, she has to do 40 hours of directed training. Um, so this is the business of the daycare. So with the 40 hours directed training, she would be in charge of changing, um, instructing and, um, bringing all the other teachers up to the bar that where she's at. So say for instance, if I get a teacher, an older teacher dad's retiring or whatever, and she wants to go in that building for the pre-K program. Her name is Ms. Angie. Ms. Angie would tell her all the li- the lesson plans that she had for the program and, and teach her how to go through the lesson plans and to make our children all on one accord. My other facility is just babies, there's diapers and everything in there. Like this facility is not that kind of facility. This facility is more, um, educational-based per se need. Because that daycare is, um, we're just teaching them social skills at this point. Like, uh, we teach them the, the basic necessities, but also teaching them, you know, primary colors, number shapes. This daycare that I'm proposing is more in-depth. It is called predio, in which that means is, is basically science and math. So you take everything that's outside and bring it inside and inside, outside. So you learn about depth, water, perception, everything. It's more in-depth.
Already licensed? Already been operating in there?
Well, no. My miss, my understanding was that it was already zoned P D D for six children. So when I went into this, this lease, it was already zoned for that. My understanding is that it could go in, I could operate or whatever. But once I realized that we couldn't have the children in there, we removed the children. So it, it wasn't like I knew the stipulations of the county at that time. I thought, once you get a zoning, that's what the zoning is and it's approved for that, whatever it's approved for. Until I spoke to, and yeah, and then, and then it changed. So then I pulled back out and I've been sitting on this property since then and trying to, um, figure out why I got the no's and turn them into, go down the list and just see, okay, how can I make this yes, how can I make this yes and yes, yes? But that's what sparked me to call everybody. And then I, I have nothing else to do but to come back here and try again. That's what program, um, made me come at today.
You made a statement about Flowing Wells, is that? They moved that to the company in Brockwood, right? Brookwood?
That was the, uh, traffic engineering's.
That's their recommendation?
Recommendation.
So they're not recommending Flowing Wells as far as an entrance and an exit?
The recommendation was to make, make Brockwood Street the main.
Right. And how far do you, do we know how far it is from this location to the red light in the turn lane? Of Flowing Wells? I know we got the school pretty close on the other side. So how far down the road is the, um?
Talking about?
Red light? And the new, and the new turn lane that's coming?
Here to here? Quick.
Which would be come down to the property?
You'll look it up right now.
240 feet.
Would be the turn lane, come back that far?
No, that's from the, from the, uh, from the stop bar to, uh, the first driveway. Yeah, it's 200, 240 feet from the stop bar down to that northernmost driveway on this property.
Any other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chair, file R Z 220508. I make a motion to disapprove the request for conditional use for a daycare for property located at tax map 078C, parcel 005.
Second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, on to Commissioner Richardson.
Yes, sir.
I think we have, uh, I 1 B 1.
I make a motion to approve change order number 13 for the Columbia County Performing Arts Center in the amount of $1,380 and 47. 170.
Second.
Scott, somebody can explain?
Sure, the, at the.
Actually, go ahead. No, go ahead.
I was gonna say at the last, uh, committee meeting, uh, it was asked that the change order be brought, uh, to debate tonight. Uh, I, just to give more time to look at it. And, uh, Mr. Stephen Prather is here to, um, answer any questions that you might have after looking over that change order.
Sure, so this is the final change order to close out the project, all the financials, all the work that we have given, uh, the contractor, changed directives from about a year ago to close the project out. This is a culmination of all those, those items. Um, so design changes, changes from us, unforeseen things that have come up. So multitude of items that we're bringing in front of you for the final change order.
There were several items in there, I saw looking through it. A lot, there was a lot of stuff, but there were some changes that we made.
Sure, so the concessions equipment, for example, was provided by us. We coordinated that. Um, so we tried our best early on to coordinate the equipment with provisions that were provided in the contract. And of course they didn't line up exactly, so multiple changes for that, for plumbing, electrical, things like that for the concessions.
Yeah, I will say this was a complex building. It's the, the largest, uh, single vertical project the county's ever done. And it's a crown jewel of, of, of the county. And, uh, Mr. Prather did a really good job of bringing this project in on budget. And, uh, even with the change order that we have, uh, as someone that's been involved in this project from day one, you know, we were told that, that we would never, never get anywhere near the amount that it came in. And for the fact that it's within 10% of the original contract sum with all the change orders we made. And the county did make some changes in there. Um, you know, we're, we're happy with the product, we're happy with what we have. There are a few things that we still need to work on, but this closes this out and this is just an important part of this project. And it was time for us to, to, to finish this one.
Any other questions, comments?
Say while change orders are never, never ideal in a construction project, this one and a half million dollars or so is, uh, certainly less than I expected, given the scope of what, what we built over there in the county. Requested many of these additions. It wasn't, um, necessarily all the contractor coming back, gimme, gimme, gimme. I've, um, reviewed this and I think it's fair. It has been dragging on a very long time, gentlemen. It's time to put it to rest if we can change order and move on down the road.
Thomas, your question? Motion second floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve coordinates number four, amending chapter 18, article nine, wireless telecommunications, section 18. Second read.
Scott, you want to give us, or is it Glenn?
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead. This is, uh, just an amendment to chapter 18, wireless telecommunications facilities that says that we'll make a final decision within 15 calendar days to either approve or, or explain in writing why a request isn't approved, uh, for wireless technology supporting, uh, public safety agencies, bonders.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Make a motion to approve the first reading of resolutions 22. And Anderson. Paul's Creek. A B. Whispering Pine, section 5A, rights form.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I believe you got it, you, Mr. Alias?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve acceptance of supplemental right-of-way along Roundtree Way as shown on the plat by land engineering dated April 18th, 2022, in contingent upon staff's approval.
Second.
Mr. Chair. I have an.
And anything you need to hear about this?
Sir, this is just the acceptance of supplemental right-of-way that's required for improvements and assistance, right? Right-of-way for turn lanes for the developmental edel.
Any questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. All abstaining? Motion carries forward of zero to one. I believe we're going back to you, Vice Chairman Richardson.
Approve $600. Right-of-way and.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Make a motion to 3,000 to John and Mary. Parcel number. Right-of-way and.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Make a motion to $20,000 to Teresa. Five, zero, one. For the hardening, hardening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion.
$24,500 to Teresa. Five, zero, one, eight. Right-of-way and. Hardening project.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
$5,000 to Lisa. Right-of-way and.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
That's 119 parcels remaining.
Thank you.
Remaining. Remaining.
Yes.
Make a motion to $1,000 to Burke. Parkway and Whispering.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Make a motion to approve $500 to Teresa. Robert Dorr. Five to obtain right-of-way and. Off Old Bell. The lane intercept.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Make a motion to approve a loan. The dollars to John and Katrina Turner. Parcel 06, 0088. Off Old Bell.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. Carries.
Make a motion to prove the donation. For Buranowski. Parcel 077, five, seven. X, seven, seven, five, eight. Homeowners Association, A, parcel 077. Four, four to obtain. For line extension.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve donation from BSFR1, owner 1L. Ex parcel 077. Five, eight. $1,686 to Hunter Junior Tax.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Make a motion to approve $190,000 to Joe. Hall of Fant. Parcel 077. Seven. Flowing Wells, quarter stories.
Second.
Glenn, can you tell us a little bit about that one? Different than the bind.
I, got that?
No, go ahead and take this one.
Yeah, so Stacy is here, so, uh, Mr. Gordon can answer any other questions that we have. But, uh, we, we do have a tank in that area. And as we continue, that area continues to grow out, we're needing to, uh, add additional capacity there. Mr. Gordon, you want to give us the rest of that?
Yes, sir, we need additional, um, ways to get water lines in and out. We have a tough time filling the tanks now. And, uh, this lady is, uh, selling her property and it's a good opportunity for us to have a different, um, route in and out of the site. Plus the front of our site, which we own all the way out to, uh, Flowing Wells Road is its own commercial. We may need a different way in and out because they've been building up that area. So that gives us an opportunity to sell that in the future and, uh, come in at a different spot.
Enterprise funds or?
This, this is what are you totally funding to be able to purchase this property?
I want to stay up there for the next one. Um, motion on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
I make a motion.
Stormwater.
Make a motion to approve $1,000 to Jordan David Barnes Jr. Tax parcel 05A. Walton's Pass, stormwater improvement.
Second.
So this one's a little bit different. This is a situation where we have a house in a subdivision that's been prone to flooding. And the area, uh, that is in, we've actually figured out a way to engineer all the stormwater from the neighborhood to go to that direction. Our county engineer, she want to talk to us about that?
Correct, so we, we had a property owner that brought to our attention flooding of their. At their level. Made aware of it, we, uh, we met with property owners. We did some internal analysis on the hydrology, all except for the property. We determined. Probably underdesigned 25 years ago. And now it's proper capacity. Options with. Sign around existing property or? Now it's covered capacity, options with, sign around existing property or property and, property we purchased, property we purchased, help strengthen the storm system, wash each way and, and manager and the property owners, we realized that no sense to property and just purchasing that property around the existing.
Homeowner have to immediately vacate or they be renting it back on somewhere else?
Just 30 days to vacate.
That's correct.
They've been very cooperative with us. This was a very cooperative thing. They've had problems with flooding in that area and we gave them a very fair price. It was a fair market value, but we gave them a very fair price for the house and they're ready to move on. So we've worked that out with them.
Motion second on the floor, all in favor, raise your right hand. Carries. My agenda, there's only one more motion that needs to be made.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, a motion that we adjourned.
All in favor, raise your right hand. We're adjourned.